Okay. Good evening, everyone. Tonight is Monday, September 19th. It's about 7:30 PM and we're in town hall room 203. Tonight is a planning and zoning commission general meeting and just a general meeting. We have a public hearing tonight. The first item on the agenda, we'll get right into it, is an executive session to be held in a different room down the hall. The executive session with town council discuss pending litigation and possible settlement of Sandra O'Connor et al. versus the planning and zoning commission of Darian et al.
Conway.
Conway.
Did I say Conway? I'm sorry. I would like to get a motion to go to executive session, get a motion, I guess, second. All's in favor? Okay. Okay. I'm looking for a motion to get us out of executive session. Jeff makes a motion, Adam makes a second. Okay. We are now out of executive session and go back into the general meeting. The next item on the agenda is vote to authorize town council to enter into a settlement of Sandra. Oh, no, but that's in the general meeting. At the reader. Enter a settlement of Sandra Conway et al. versus planning and zoning commission of Darian et al. Jeremy, what are we doing?
We are going to hold off on this matter. Till the other day, we'll put it on an agenda at a future agenda for the vote to authorize town council.
Fantastic. Okay, so we're going to skip that one. Next item on the agenda, amendment to the Darian planning and zoning regulations COZR number three dash 2022, put forth by Darian, a Bush report, forth by FR Darian, Inc., and amendment to the business site plan application number two ninety-six, special permit application number two ninety-six, land filling and recreating application number four oh nine, FR Darian LLC, the Commons at Nuroton Heights. Excuse me. Proposal to amend the commission's previous October tenth, 2017 approval to allow office and medical and dental uses as permitted use on the first floor of buildings, subject to percentage caps, as would be permitted by the proposed amendments to the Darian zoning regulation, COZR number three dash twenty twenty-two, put forth by FR Darian LLC. Clarification regarding previously approved zoning regulation amendments and site plan special permit approval regarding first floor use, subject to percentage caps. I'm going to give a quick introduction and then Fred hand it over. This is something that I want to say that I missed. When we put in that 10% cap on the ground floor retail space, the number I was always using was plus or minus 115,000, 120,000 square feet. So 10% of that is like 12,000 feet. Fred, in his excellent due diligence, said, Steve, Equinox, which is included in the number, and also the Citibank building, which is included in the number, is effectively 10,000 square feet and 10,000 square feet, 20,000 feet. So when I was adding up the numbers, I said, there's, you know, fifteen, there's like 40,000 square feet retail in this building, 40,000 square feet that building. Equinox is 20, the other building is 20, you add it all up, you're right there. But the part where either I overstretched too fast was that Equinox is a two-story building. And same with Citibank. So Fred said, Steve, that's really not first floor, and the amendment says first floor. And he's right. And I missed it. The other part relative to the Citibank building, that's got ground floor retail, which is Citibank, and it also has Edwards.
Edward Jones?
Edward Jones on the other side, so that's okay. The second floor is office space. My doctor used to be in there. The leasing office is in there now. You could easily convert those units to residential someday. So I think that should not be in the calculations, too. So what Fred did, and he and I went over the numbers, you know, a bunch of different times. Yeah, this was the last cut at it. If you take out the first one, you can explain this when you get, where you take out the second floors, it's only 101,000 square feet. If you include in the second floor of Equinox, it's 123,000 feet. And that's what I was always talking about. So Fred looked at the draft again and came up with the numbers, and I'll let you take it over.
Yeah.
Did I explain it right?
Yeah, you did. And, you know, I think it's really more of a point of clarification than anything else here. But at the time, July, when the commission considered this zoning amendment put forth by federal, the applicant at that time petitioned the commission to use that 10% cap for the total, what they defined as building complex. So total commercial space within the entire building complex.
Which includes the second floors.
Which includes second floors, right. So when staff drafted the decision on the amendment and the commission considered that, it was drafted such that it put a 10% cap on commercial space only on the first floor. So it ended up shortchanging the total square footage that could be applied to medical and dental offices on the first level by just a very negligible amount, couple hundred square feet, 500, 400 square feet. So it's really, you know, I have the numbers here.
Did you black line this on what we're changing? So it's really just a couple, yeah, just a couple of numbers. So that's the concept. Everybody okay with it?
Yeah.
You know, it's really a difference of about 264 square feet is what it ends up being. Because this amendment is really only applicable to the Nuroton Heights business zone and sites with buildings that are more than 100,000 square feet. This is really the only site that this would apply to, right?
Okay.
So, you know, per the amendment, the number was a total of 9,900 square feet roughly that could be used for medical and dental offices on the first floor. When you account for that second floor commercial space, that bumps it up to about 12,000. So another 2,000 square feet.
So is that like one or two occupant or dental or doctor offices could have an office? Is that, or is that one?
They have a space on the end, which is like 12,000 feet.
Okay.
Right, that's the only in the building that's going up now.
Right.
That building's got a 12,000 square foot vacancy. The idea is they want to switch that to office down.
And federal's actually, federal's actually asking, they were negotiating leases with three tenants, right? And it turns out that those three tenants comes in about 10,400, 10,500 in that range, so they wouldn't even be using that 12,000 cap. But they needed to exceed that 9,900 that was originally approved by the commission. So.
Okay.
Looking to make that change in the resolution.
Okay, so we have a draft resolution on our hands, the black line, just a black line on the back. Where it says, related to commercial square footage of all buildings, contains parcels, exceeds 100,000 feet. Purpose is spot, that's really the stuff. Total complex and/or, I don't know, use the first floor of the building complex to exceed 10%. Looking for a motion to approve as submitted. Jeff makes a motion, looking for a second. Amy, you got a second?
Can I go off on a tangent for just a second? On the language down in offices, business and professional, it refers to offices are inclusive of co-working mixed-use spaces. Is mixed-use a term of art or literally mixing with or any?
Third page of the resolution, very bottom, it's supposed to, the mixed-use is supposed to be an insurance guy, a lawyer, and a tax accountant. I can imagine, but can it also be evidential and, you know?
Mixed-use by definition.
Business and professional offices are inclusive of co-working mixed-use spaces containing desks or other workspaces and facilities used by recognized membership, right? So that's specifically referencing this co-working space.
Let's get rid of the word mixed-use.
Yeah, you know, we probably can get rid of that mixed-use.
Yeah, I think George is right. I agree with.
No, he's right. Mixed-use means residential.
Co-working, take out the word mixed-use.
Because of co-working spaces containing desks and other workspaces.
Yeah, they mean the co-working spaces mixed-use, not the mixed-use.
Right.
Yeah, exactly.
But in most real estate, they talk about mixed uses, ground floor retail.
Thank you, George.
Sure, okay.
I will note, however, that this definition that was added by federal, or this one section that was added by federal regarding co-working spaces. Is somewhat of a moot point at this point because the first floor office space that's allowed by this amendment is only medical and dental offices. Business and professional offices are still not allowed to occupy first floor space in the Nuroton Heights business zone. They can occupy upper floors, but not on the first floor. That was a deviation from what federal originally approached the commission with. But, you know, so be it. I mean, this still applies to other office and business and professional uses throughout the town.
Yeah, okay.
But it's just a distinction to make, I think.
Okay. Motion on table, we got a second, and we're making one ask, because after you do motion in a second, then you can do edits. So we're going to edit and take out the word mixed uses after co-working. In definition ten, definition two-ten on page three. Okay? With that edit, others in favor?
Five zero.
I've had nothing. Sorry about that, I picked the, I picked the.
Oh, I wouldn't do that.
Don't let it happen again.
Second floor, what did I tell you? Next item on the agenda, amendment to site plan application number three oh six, special permit, the Mather Homestead Foundation, Inc., Steven Mather Road, request to modify special permit for one-time, single-day basis to permit 300-plus attendees, food sales, and modify parking plan for the Fall Harvest Festival in October 2022. This is something that we approved last year, two years ago? Did they do it?
So there's been a couple of different events the homestead has done. They did the bicentennial event last year, so this fall festival was something that the commission didn't consider this past year. I think it was the year prior to that and maybe the year prior to that as well. But the commission put a limitation on the number of folks that can show up to any one of these larger events, a cap of 150 visitors. So with the Fall Harvest Festival that's planned for October, this upcoming fall, just a couple of weeks away, they're looking to increase that limit to 300-plus folks or visitors on the site for the duration of the event, which I believe will runs from about 11 o'clock to 2 o'clock in the afternoon.
Slide down the room.
I did, but I could try.
Which way, we want to go, this way or we want to go that way?
Wherever we want to go.
Just tell a guy he's not walking. Discuss it with them.
The corner spot's the best one.
It's like if you notice, it's the movies that got the corner spot.
The record reflected, Mike, that it shut up late at 8:20. Thanks, Mike Fisher. Sorry, Fred.
Yeah, no worries. So the Mather Homestead Executive Director Heather Rager submitted this request on September 8th. You have that request in your packets detailing the event to take place in October. Richard Lobella of the Darian Police Department also submitted an email for the record, also on September 8th, and I will just read that into the record. Good morning, Heather. Per Chief Anderson, the number of people will not be an issue as long as all parking is contained to the Mather Homestead property. There is a police officer to assist parking and pedestrian traffic. We've confirmed your request for an extra duty officer from 10:30 AM until 2:30 PM on October 22nd. The regular patrol shift that day will also be aware of the event. So we just reached out to the homestead when they originally approached us to ask for this one-time exception. We had asked them at that time to reach out to the Darian Police Department, make sure that everything would be okay from their perspective and, you know, perhaps, you know, they could hire a police officer to help with traffic and pedestrian circulation. John Seeny is here tonight, a board member of the Mather Homestead, so if you have any additional questions or would like clarifications, John can perhaps answer those for you.
And I think we also put in your packet the copy of the letter that was sent to the neighbors dated August 31st. They did do some outreach to the neighbors, which outlines the request as well.
Okay. You want to answer a question or should I ask Fred?
John Seeny, Mather Homestead Board Member.
Welcome, sir. Nice to see you. What do you think the most of the people they had at any one event there is today?
It was last year at the bicentennial. We, I was actually on parking duty, if you will, with four people lining the cars. Basically, if you think of the property, you go in that eastern entrance and you make a hard right before the guesthouse, and we mow basically that northeast corner of the property, all the way up to the fence line to, basically, that's the new Kanan line. And I think at that point, we counted like 150 cars for that event. That was a big event. That was with the mock battle and such. This isn't, we've done this event three other times. Not the bicentennial. And it's, the only reason we come to you because it usually goes beyond 150 people, but never at one time. You know, they come and go over an hour, hour and a half time period. So that's the reason we come, just to give you the heads up that, you know, we'd like an exception for the 150 event limit, but there won't be 150 people typically on the property at one.
So when you have 150 cars, that's probably 300 people, I read, right?
Right, I was saying 150 attendees. So, yeah, I mean, the bicentennial event went really smoothly, too. I mean, we.
I think we had a parking plan on that one.
Yeah, I mean, we literally, we had, four of us had flags, we lined the cars in and helped them get out, and we didn't even have the police for that one. It went really smoothly. So I'll be up there on the 22nd with the police officers on board duty that night, that afternoon.
Any other questions for?
I just have one quick question. In your letter, it says that you've heard their neighbors concerned.
Yeah. Unrelated to this. We originally put in a amendment to the special permit, special permit, and the communication admittedly wasn't good, so we pulled that special permit. We've since had a couple, one large meeting with the neighbors and a few smaller meetings with the neighbors. So, again, unrelated to this, but, you know, we've told the neighbors, we'd be in constant communication with them over any events and such, trying to mend the fence, if you will.
And you haven't heard any specific concerns from the neighbors about this fall harvest?
This fall harvest, no. And I asked Fred, I think, this afternoon, if you guys had heard anything relative to this, and I don't think the department had either. No, we haven't. No feedback from neighbors.
Yeah, the police department's intricately involved, as you can see. They really, when I spoke to Chief Anderson, he's, oh, yeah, fully aware of what's going on and assist in any way they can and.
A tenant in the guesthouse is a police officer, too.
Just for, we had back to school night to the day at the high school, and I think it went smooth as silk, and they park on that tennis court field with cars and just pack them in there. And that's, that to me is the biggest car event in town.
And there's a rain delay, a rain.
Date.
Date, if we get rain that day, so it's not like they're going to park in mud either.
Yeah, I looked at the tennis court field the next day, and there's not a car track on it. Okay, so since it's, we can take a straw vote, right?
Can I, I just did want to ask.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. No, just quickly, it seems like we have this opportunity to ask whether in January of every year, we're getting a schedule of large events?
We did, yes. Heather sent it through somewhere on my desk.
Good, no, that's all, I didn't have good.
I think you get an update during the year.
Yeah, because usually what happens, whether it's Mather Homestead or the YMCA or the DCA, usually they give us their best estimate in December. Life throws curveballs, people make reservations, so usually June, July, each of them sends in, oh, yeah, by the way, we moved this, for whatever reason, so.
Covid happened.
Yeah, covid or scheduling or whatever it is. So invariably, they all end up changing, but at least we get advance notice and can make sure everything checks out, similar to the DC, Art Center downstairs has to give us their schedules for the fall and the summer every year to make sure there's no conflicts.
And just, can I just make something clear again? There is no special permit amendment out there because we don't want to, you know, this is just.
General meeting.
Yeah, just so everybody sees in town, we're not trying to pull a fast one.
It's a general meeting. Can I just ask you to give us a, like a debrief report after it's over?
Yeah.
You know, like.
If that's okay, or Jeremy, any mail, any.
Yeah, yeah, whatever, whatever you're doing.
Yeah, I mean, again, the, I don't, I wish some of you were able to make that bicentennial thing, because that was really cool and, you know, good crowd up there to witness the mock battle, so skirmish, I think they call it, or something.
The right guy's wrong.
I'd like to get a motion to approve the request as submitted. Amy makes the motion, looking for a second. Jeff makes a second. Five zero, six zero. Thank you.
Good luck, sir.
Thanks, Jen. Next item on the agenda, deliberations and possible decisions on the following. Proposed amendments to Darian zoning regulation, COZR number four dash 2022, amendment to the special permit application number one eighty-eight, F as in Frank, Darian Board of Education, two and eighty, thanks to their name. I want to read the whole item. Proposal to amend the Darian zoning regulations to permit the lighting and public address facilities at Stadium Field on the Darian High School property to be utilized for nonprofit educational and community purposes inclusive of, but not limited to athletic activities. Proposal to amend the applicant's previous special permit to expand the hours and number of days that the lighting and public address facilities may be utilized and to expand the permissible uses of the facilities, God bless you, from limited athletics to use, to include community-wide events and activities, including those of groups and organizations unaffiliated with the town of Darian for the school district. The hearing closed on July 12th, 2022. The decision deadline is September 27th, 2022. And today is, what's today, the 19th?
19th.
So two weeks ago, or two meetings ago, we debated and went over the amendment, or the resolution at our last meeting, which was two weeks ago. We went over the first draft of the amendment. You're up to speed, right, Mike?
Yes.
Yeah, you were here at the other first meeting. Fred redated this one from the 6th to the 19th, so today we have another draft of the amendment. A lot of the stuff at the beginning is, you know, self-explanatory, there's dates and whatnot that got changed. The meat of it, I think, gets to the back. Where, yeah, on page four, we said for properties in the town of Darian and for town-owned properties that are non-school district, that was one of the items where it said it was only the Board of Education. And like the field out there is not Board of Education, they can have an event out there or lights out there. On page five is the number of days of the week that was changed. That was to include Saturdays. And then I think it gets deeper. What did we do, yeah?
Yeah, what did they do?
Yeah, with G. With G. The big one is item G, but let me go make sure, not including sports is on page nineteen, on page 10. We made a couple of changes to item A. Item G, this was, I want to give you the credit for it.
Apparently not, you deleted it all.
That was the noise impact testing that we talked about last time. We did hear from town council, and they chimed in, in some way, shape, and form, and I'll let Jeremy explain where it came from.
Well, certainly you recall on the September 6th meeting, there was a little back and forth about condition G. By then, Mike was not up to speed, Mike has since gotten up to speed. And Amy's up to speed as well. And so since the last meeting, we circled, talked to a number of you about any changes to the draft, and that seemed to be the paragraph that seemed to get people's interest. And the consensus that Fred and I got was the majority wanted to remove paragraph G since last meeting. So that's why we've shown it as strikeout based upon our conversations with a number of you.
But I also think, one of, you know, I'm not, you can speak for yourself.
Yep.
You wanted town council's opinion?
Yep, yep. And I do think, and I, before this evening, I went back and re-watched our last meeting and just to make sure I was refreshing all of the threads and thought process that we were all going through. And at the end of the day, I do think the fact that we are going to potentially collect information and not have any plan to use it led me to believe that I'm not, didn't think that this was a prudent thing to do. Like it just, I didn't think it was, it didn't make sense. In light of the fact that there is the recourse for the neighbors to go and voice their concerns through the other, the other paragraph that's here with regards to their ability to log in their concerns through a protocol that already exists. So kind of those two things is where I'm okay with this coming out now.
Okay. Were you at the last meeting?
No, I wasn't.
Okay. So do you have any questions on this paragraph G?
No.
What I did last meeting is we did a straw vote of the five of us that were here, and Amy was the last one to chime in, so she landed between the fingers.
So I was on the hot seat.
But it's, I mean, she just spoke for herself now, so that's kind of sort of, so would you, do you like?
So we're not doing, we're not doing the noise impact?
Right now, right now it's out?
Perfect.
Okay, so you don't like it either?
No, I mean, I mean, for me, it's like if you buy a house next to a firehouse, there's noise, and there's noise, it's a lot of noise. Buy a church, buy a highway, I mean, it's just, it's a couple of neighbors. Like you know that you're buying a house close to a school. Like you know that you're buying a house close to a highway or a firehouse or a church, whatever, I mean, there's noises. Some may have bought their homes before the lights went up in 17.
Not the, not the gentleman that was here.
I don't know.
You know, who, you know, I get it, a lot of people started work from home after, during the pandemic, I get that part, but it's still, I mean, there's.
Great.
The only, I don't, I mean, I would like to see the report, but if we strike it, fine. But if the basis for striking it is that if they go do a noise study and then they tell us what the results are, if there's nothing to be done, then what is the point of having I and the report submitted annually to us as well? Because there's also no enforcement or mechanism for us to do anything with that data either. So if you're, feels like if you're going to kill one, you kill both of those, right?
I think I, if I remember. I think I is in the current special permit.
If I recall, Fred, do you recall that? Why'd you make it bold?
New wording and bold.
So maybe it is new wording.
So it may.
Maybe new wording.
We can certainly confirm that, but I think it probably is now.
But we have that now with the temporary lights.
Yeah, I think, I think that, that's that mechanism for people to be able to, I read that as for us to be able to see.
But they complain to the Board of Ed, they don't complain to us, so even if we get a report for all the complaints, we can't do anything with it, right? There's no, there's nothing for us to do with that. There's no, there's nothing for us to do with that report except look at it.
More to ascertain that, hey, they had X amount of events, and here's the days that they-
The same thing we did with those guys. We, we always had that, we always had that, we, it actually came to us with DJFL.
Right, DJFL does that.
They had to submit it.
I don't know if the high school does, but DJFL definitely does.
Has to submit, the DJFL has to-
Right, which is the lights at Holy Hand here.
We had, you know, eighteen practices, and it was eighteen days.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're consistent. If our, if the concern is there's no way to enforce the gathering of this data, then it's-
But I think, I think this one is a little more relevant, because we're, we're putting forward stipulations as to time constraints, number of events. And this is a report that's going to be put forth to say, this is in fact what was done last year. And so we have the ability to say, are they do, are they consistent with the parameters under which we're, we're now collectively agreeing to? And then, and then also, I, I'd be interested to see if, how many formal complaints are coming from the neighbors. So I think it, it gives us an opportunity to be, to see, number one, if they are adhering to what we're about to agree to.
Plus, they also, they can't, they can only have fifty events.
Right, total, non-practice.
Yep, and, and timing, and, you know, days of the week, and their hours.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm for both of the reports, but it feels like it's inconsistent, that's all. Like, we're asking them not to violate the noise ordinance, so here's a report that says, "Did you violate the noise ordinance?" We don't want that, but we also want to have a report that shows that they're in compliance with all the other stipulations. It seems inconsistent, so if, my only concern was if we, if we strike G, which is fine, then it feels like I should, should get the boot as well.
Well, I, I think that the other one is a little more ambiguous. Because if it's a sporting event, it gets excluded out of the noise ordinance of the state. So that's, that's one of the reasons why I think it's just this ambiguous thing that we, as a, as a body, I don't know what teeth we have over that. Where this one on I is, we're saying Monday through Thursday until X, Saturday and Sunday, it came to more than fifty, like, so we're saying parameters, and I will report on those parameters. That's the way I look at it, that's why they're different.
And I, I think that G provides some meat to the issue of noise. I think there ought to be a way to determine by how much that we are exceeding the actual decibel limitations that are in the statute. And I think that it ties in nicely with I, because it can be a subject for discussion with the Board of Ed. We can make and would make the audio, the, the noise reports available, they're in the public record, so they can take them with them and say, "Well, yeah, we still have this complaint." My concern, and my, the reason I would oppose the entire resolution, is that after all this talk about noise, we will be doing nothing about noise.
Well, having watched the hearing, I, I got a better perspective on sort of the complaints. And, and one of the complaints was at five o'clock in the afternoon.
Correct, exactly. I think, I think it was actually earlier than that.
And so, you know, that's permissible, right? And so I think if we start doing this testing with, with no tie to, "We're going to shut this down if it's over the noise regulation." And by the way, forty-five decibels is, I think someone said, the hum of a washing machine?
I got, I got a report-
Refrigerator, I actually said in the press.
Yeah, I got the report the other day from work, and it had decibels, and it was like a train, it's like ninety. And it, I was shocked, like, that's funny, where the hell I saw it, but forty-five was like nothing.
Extremely low. So I don't know why we would hold the Board of Ed to a higher standard than we'd hold any other homeowner or resident in the town. And I think the testing just, you know, it's going to be louder than forty-five decibels.
Yeah, and, and I acknowledged that in our last session.
And it's an exempt activity, so, you know, how are you going to parse through? I think it's just creating a quagmire for, for staff, because they're the ones that have to implement this. And for us, because we're going to have to actually take some action when it's over the, the decibel level.
What, what did town council say? You told me these were-
Town council's concern, again, they don't want to impose their, their opinions. But what they said was basically what you discussed at the last meeting. You will receive a report, it will go in the public record. And that report will be available, just what Mike said, to everybody. And it will be available to the Board of Ed, it will be available to the press, it will be available to the neighbors. The neighbors, of course, have the right to appeal this decision. They would have the right to take further complaints to the Board of Ed, et cetera, et cetera. And that was one of the concerns is, if you're going to require a document that comes to public record, and will it just sit in the file? So I think their concern was requiring a document that will have no ramifications other than, because the commission wouldn't be able to enforce anything. It wasn't necessarily a violation of the approval, but you'd be having data being gathered.
Back, back to my point about I then, so like-
But no, if you have fifty-one events, it's a violation.
But I is relevant to our approval.
Yeah, if they have fifty-one events, it's, 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 it's a violation.
And then what, they can't use the lights anymore?
Oh.
Well, they can't have fifty-one events.
Well, they have a discussion.
But this is a post, so let's say they do the report, the report says, "We had fifty-two last year, sorry." Then what, then what happens?
Yeah, then, then, then you can, you can either go against it, because we have the same exact thing happens at, like the YMCA.
They have a limit on large events. I think it's twenty-two, twenty, I think it's twenty-four.
Yeah, they've never, they've never got over it.
Yeah, I don't think they're going to go over it. I'm not, I'm not really concerned with it. I just think it's somewhat inconsistent, that's all.
Yeah.
I provides that this report will also allow the Board of Ed to consider what they could do differently to reduce impacts to neighboring property owners. And it's the same sort of thing where they're not great teeth, but it's at least a, a subject of conversation, which would get some attention and perhaps some remediation. And I would also say to Mr. Nutter's point, I, I mean, forty-five was simply the number I used because that was in the statute. You can maybe sixty-five, seventy-five, whatever. What I thought was important was establishing some kind of baseline, and, and each of the tests thereafter will, you know, compare and contrast how, what their numbers are. If they're ninety, if they're a hundred each time, well, at least we know what it is. The forty-five isn't really the issue.
No, but I think the report, once it's generated, just becomes cannon fodder.
I think it's fair for it to be cannon fodder if it's a egregious situation.
Well, and you get back to my point I made in, in the last meeting, which is they, they absolutely have the ability to do their own testing.
Yeah.
If, if they are aggrieved by this, and I think one of the, one of the members of public called it a nuisance, and if they believe it is a nuisance, then there is legal recourse. There's a whole court system designed to deal with that. I don't think we should be the ones imposing this on Appledale. I think it's, it's burdensome, and it, and it's, it's really not useful. Because you get the exempt activity, you, you then start layering in, okay, well, you're allowed to have a leaf blower going in your yard. Right? That's like eighty-five decibels, but we're going to limit the, the school to sixty?
We are not limiting it. We are looking to find out how bad it is, and what are the differences from games to games, and letting them discuss those results. But anyway, don't go on about it. I, I see the handwriting on the wall.
Yeah, I mean, we can go round and round on it.
There's no need.
I, I, I get it. I just, I mean, I go back to when the horn goes off in, in the time of the game. You have, you have a touchdown, and it goes, it spiked to ninety, and they go, it happened at, you know, eight thirty-two. Whatever, eight thirty-two, okay? They scored, they scored a touchdown.
Right.
You know, or at five o'clock when they, Courtney's name comes up, and they blow the horn. It's disgusting, because it's, why did they blow the horn that day? I don't know. I just, I don't think it's useful. Okay, you don't like it, you on the fence?
No, okay.
You're, you, no, you want to interrupt? You okay with the way it is now with this?
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
Okay, okay. You're not okay? Got it?
I'm okay.
Okay. So, we just beat up and, and bantered over G. Anything else? H, I mean, I, I personally like I, I think that's something we did for the other ones. You know, we, we did, we did some of those, we did that for the other town events and whatnot, we also did it for DJFL. So everything else stays in effect on that one, which is H. Good.
One thing I noticed, and I think the old approval, which was delays for injury or longer playtime, was that discussed or not discussed here?
That's-
So, I mean, we've got a hard stop at, at ten o'clock, but if there's a kid injured on the field, obviously, we don't want to shut the lights off.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
While someone's, you know, trying to attend to it.
I don't recall that being-
The, the other item that's come down was in, you know, in some sports, they have lightning delays.
Right.
Right? And all of a sudden, there's a lightning strike, and you got to sit around and twiddle your thumbs.
Oh yeah, here it is, it might, it's on page nine at the bottom. If the last paragraph, paragraph five, Friday night games can extend till ten PM, unless there are extraordinary circumstances such as overtime or a delay due to injury or other unforeseen issues. So what you're saying is-
So in a way, so that's coming out?
That's coming out, but Mike's saying, maybe we should include that-
Put it back in.
In paragraph E, where we say, well, that's PA system, but I think the same thing is, you can't use a PA system for three-quarters of football game, the game's running a little late, and then there's no more PA system.
Right. So I think it needs to go into the, the lighting paragraph.
What was the, what was the Friday night previous limit, limit?
At ten PM.
Well, but the reason why it's coming out, because it would be Friday and Saturday now.
Right.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, oh.
Yeah, we put a hard stop on the PA, but not the lights, right? In that, in that event, like somebody gets injured, the lights stay on, but the PA can't come on after ten. That's governed by section E.
Right. So the question is, do you want to amend E by adding a sentence that says, similar to lights, which is, unless there are extraordinary certain, the PA use can extend until ten PM on Fridays and Saturdays, and until nine PM during weekdays, unless there are extraordinary circumstances such as overtime or a delay due to injury or other unforeseen issues. Is that something the commission wants to include?
I'd say yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'd say no, it's the PA system.
Right.
They, they played sports about it. I grew up without a PA system. I can cut it off at, at ten o'clock at night.
Oh, that paragraph is about the PA system, not about the lights.
Not about the lights, lights stay on. If there's an injury, the ambulance got to come on the field, no problem. But the announcer can't be calling games at eleven, eleven o'clock at night, even if it is a Friday night. That seems a little, like, it just seems, I, I get the light situation is certainly a, a public safety issue. The PA system is just purely aesthetic optionality.
So it's really just reinstate that paragraph that refers to the extraordinary circumstances.
So we're going to put that on-
Just plug it in any one place.
We're going to put that in, and B, page ten, B, is what, what the sense I'm getting from the commission. If you say time limitations for lighting facilities, the second paragraph, practices, games, and other activities shall be allowed under the lights until nine PM Monday through Thursday, and ten PM Friday and Saturday.
Where, where are you starting?
Unless other extraneous circumstances, or something like that, right there. Yeah, yeah.
Second bullet point.
Yeah, because you don't want to shut the lights off if an ambulance is on the field and they're holding somebody off.
So we'll change it for that.
Because it's like nine fifty-nine.
Just as a point of clarification, is, is overtime an extraordinary circumstance?
Right.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, unless there are extraordinary circumstances such as overtime or a delay due to injury or other unforeseen issues.
Okay, I went to a Greenwich game when they had a power outage, and we sat around for forty-five minutes until the lights come on, until that game went till eleven o'clock at night.
At least the lights were off for a while.
They weren't, they weren't on for eight hours, but they were, that's a good catch.
Okay, so we'll change that, but, so the consensus I'm getting from the commission is change that, but don't change E.
Which is the sound system.
I mean, I think you can have a game without, you know, Guy Razinsky saying, you know, "Welcome home, I'm safe right home." At, at eleven thirty at night.
Yeah, unless you need the sound system to direct traffic, or crowd, or, you know, any of the other, so maybe, maybe for emergency services or something.
If there's an emergency situation, it's, the emergency is going to prevail, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the police think of it.
Yeah, 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 yeah. You're in a whole different scenario. Yep. I'm fine with that.
All right, so we're, so we're putting, we're putting B, the thing on page nine, which is V, back in. BV?
Yes.
BV, okay, but it's going to say Friday ends Saturday.
Yes, got it.
And you're putting it where?
Page ten, B, that second paragraph under time limitations for lighting facilities. Practices, games, and other activities shall be allowed under the lights until nine PM Monday through Thursday, and ten PM Friday and Saturday, unless there are extraordinary circumstances such as overtime or a delay due to injury or other unforeseen issues.
So you're not making another bullet point, just end the sentence?
Correct.
Okay, everyone's over with that?
Yes.
Good. Anything else? Anybody caught that didn't catch? Okay. With that said, I would entertain a motion to approve as amended. Jeff makes a motion.
I'll second.
Mike makes a second. All is in favor? That's five. All opposed? That's one. No objections. Five, one, great. Thank you, everybody. Next item on the agenda is, proposal to opt out of apartment requirements set forth in section six of Public Act twenty dash twenty-one dash twenty-nine. This legal notice is Darien Planning and Zoning's Commission's official notice of the intent of the town of Darien to initiate the process by which a municipality may opt out of the provisions of section six of Public Act twenty-one dash twenty-nine regarding accessory apartment units. In our packet, we have a draft resolution dated today. As a, as a, as it aside, I drive around Stanford a lot, there's signs in Stanford city, opt out of the provision.
Yep.
I guess it's, it's a hard, a hard-
I think it's going before the Greenwich RTM tonight.
Is it? Okay. And, and, it's the little, the little wording, which is smaller, says, "We want to make our own regulations," which is exactly what we've been talking about. I mean, I think we debated this thing round and round and round. I think we all came to the same conclusion that we want to draft our own resolution, our own, is it resolution law?
Regulation.
Regulation, thank you. Dave Keating, who is our outside consultant, is working on that, so all this stuff is supposed to go in tandem. If you recall, if you recall, Amy Parsanti, when she was chairman of the PZNH, having the, the parking regulation already done was a great piece of information that put the RTM at rest. That's why we got to kind of fast-track that and get it, something close, and decide what we're going to do. So we got work to do too, but let's deal with this now, because this goes up to the state. And I think in terms of statistics, no, that's the marijuana law. Yeah, I don't know the statistics on that.
Most people are, as far as I heard, most communities are opting out, that I've heard of.
Okay, yeah.
You're right. I'll make it, thank you.
Okay. Questions, comments, typos, scriptures, uh, on this one? Amy, you want to start with you?
I'm good.
You're good?
I'm good.
Jeff, any questions come with this one?
Good.
Mike, George?
All good.
Okay. Motion to, seek a motion to approve the resolution as submitted? Jeff makes a motion.
Go, go with Amy.
Take it a second. Adam makes a second. All is in favor?
Six, zero.
Thank you.
We only needed one, I believe, right? We ended up with, what, nine or ten reasons?
Yeah, exactly.
That was great.
We, we did have a lot of reasons.
That was one of them.
Next item on the agenda, deliberations only, also site plan review number twenty-seven, effus and frank, flood damage prevention application number twenty, effus and frank, landfilling recruiting application number three twenty-five A, amendment to the special permit application number twenty dash Q, site plan, uh, site plan. The Tokenie Club Inc., for Tokenie Beach Road, propose to replace the existing swimming pool and its equipment, reduce the size of and renovate the bathhouse, relocate the snack bar from the ground level of the clubhouse to an outdoor area near the pool, renovate the existing snack bar area, make improvements to terracing, walkways, and landscaping, and perform related site development activities within regulated areas. No intensification of the use is proposed. The public hearing closed on September, I'm sorry, yeah, September sixth. The big thing with these special permits and the activity and the regulation is the intensity of use. That's why that last paragraph is there. At the end of the day, I think they did a great job. At the end of the day, I think they did a great job. I was really concerned with the putting in of those, uh, wood boards, yeah, of the metal piles and pounding those things in for weeks and weeks and weeks, 20 feet in the ground. So now that those things are not gonna be permanent, they did orientate the pool a different direction.
I think it's better.
Yeah, you would probably know the statistics, I mean, it's, it's really weird, like, a lot of pools go, like, in the town, go, like, east-west, or something like that, and every once in a while, you go there, and it's like, whoa, the sun sets a different way. I think they did a great application, there, there's nothing I think they missed. Why it does a good job is getting all those consultants.
They talked about the pool heaters, which will be removable, they talked about the flood prevention plan, they have health department approval for a new septic system. Azure D from Race was gonna get us some revised plans as a condition of approval, the sheet pile was the big change, the way that, uh, laid out. They talked about the neighbor and landscaping, and making sure Mr. Montero was comfortable with what was going on that, I'll call it the far east side of the property. They did the fancy umbrella, I forget what technical term they used for that, but, uh, yeah, there were a number of issues that.
Sun canopy.
Sun canopy, that have to be covered.
And the catenary lights?
Yep, catenary lights, yeah.
And I was, I was actually really shocked that there was not one neighbor, you know, in the whole Tokenie Association that came in, and you do send the stuff to the Tokenie Association, right?
They do, I believe they get every email agenda, so they.
I know they had a HOA meeting two weeks ago.
Do you live in Tokenie?
No, I live right next to it.
Okay.
But, uh, it, this did not come up at their meeting either.
Wow.
So, whether or not they even know about it.
No, they're all members, they're all gonna be paid for it, that's for sure.
There's a lot of Tokenie.
Members, yeah.
Association residents that are members. In fact, I think the bylaws are a certain percentage of their membership is Tokenie Association residents, and if they go below that percentage, then the waitlist shifts and Tokenie Association members get kind of popped to the top. Yeah, so I think there's a fair amount that.
A bunch of new members that joined this year also did not know about this renovation either.
They'll tell the new members.
So, I'm not sure who, who they're telling, but I was talking, because a bunch of my son's friends are, live in Tokenie, right around the corner from us, and, uh, they, a bunch of them didn't know about it, they're like, I just joined, I'm like, yeah, well, it's going under construction in about nine months.
No, it's actually a year and nine months.
A year and nine months.
It's a year and nine months, but they'll, they'll get the assessment, that's for sure.
So if there's any other things as we, Fred and I will get this on the October 11th agenda.
Can I recall, um, there was a quick comment made that, uh, they have a new septic system, I think under the tennis court or something?
Yep.
But they, they said, well, it's working okay, the monitoring of it isn't working properly or something.
That is correct, uh, they did discuss that at the hearing, uh, because I think that was one of the comments from the health department.
Oh, okay.
Is making sure, uh, I know there was, on the plan, they showed a water line that went right through this pool area that they've worked on abandoning. But, uh, yeah, the getting the right monitoring, I know that's an issue with the health department, is making sure they can continue, you got a waterfront septic system, you gotta make sure it works.
So should we have a condition to that effect in this?
Let me see what we can do on that, yeah.
And you're right, it did, the septic system is in the tennis courts.
I believe, uh, under it.
Under, well, I think so.
The tennis courts got lifted, and I was like.
That's why I'm losing when I play more.
We're gonna direct staff to.
Whites only on the tennis courts, it's a dangerous game.
So you guys are gonna write, uh, in favorable.
Okay, good.
The next thing we have is, um, six sets of minutes, maybe we did this right?
Yeah, you added a six to it.
Yeah, you did sneak it a six.
Sneaked it in, snuck it in there.
Housekeeping, it's only nine o'clock.
Keep it moving.
Keep it moving.
All right, we'll start at the beginning, April 19th.
19.
19th, I'm sorry, um, and, and, and I thought the meeting was tomorrow, so I didn't read all these things coming together. Someone goes, oh, you have a meeting today, I said, no, we don't, it's tomorrow, they're like, yeah, instead of. Questions, comments, scrivners, errors, typos.
People 19.
Lot of resolutions.
Steve, Jeff, and Adam.
No, this is good to me, I've read through it.
On the 19th.
Yeah, I have no nets.
Altitude.
This was the first one of the Montessori, one of the ones with the Montessori in it.
The altitude is a thing, we improved that by, this is going back to E. K.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's been a while since we've done some minutes.
The resolutions we can't change, oh, that's the Montessori resolution. Okay, that's, um, um, okay, we have no typos and any part of this one. Entertain a motion to approve submitted, um, Adam makes a motion, Jeff makes a second, all in favor?
Abstaining.
Three to zero, three to zero.
Four, three to zero to, to three.
Yep. Mike, George, and Amy abstain.
No, not me.
Nope, George, George is in.
I'm a, I'm a permanent.
Great.
Wasn't I there?
You were not there.
I was not there.
Did you watch it on, you watched it on?
Did you watch it?
I can't tell you now that I did, so, all right, not much handy.
Three to zero, okay, great.
So, so tiny, Paul, and.
Steve, Ken, and Adam, got it.
Three, zero, okay, next up, uh, April 26, 2022. Public hearing on special permit was Darien hot chicken, it's our first thing on Darien hot chicken.
This is also down at Mather Center, right?
Yeah, this is in the Mather Center, upstairs.
Yeah. Yeah.
That was really, that was it, really?
That was all hot chicken.
It was all hot chicken, we did one day for them.
On the agenda item.
Yeah, questions, comments, typos, scrivners, errors.
Nope, this one looked good.
Okay.
What I will call the COVID meeting.
Yes.
That was our P&amp;Z super spreader.
All right.
Somebody get COVID after that?
I did, he did.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, this one is, um, Ovani, Adam, and then.
That's it.
That's it, and anybody that watched it on TV.
I did not watch this one.
Okay, motion to approve submitted, you make the motion, looking for a second.
How do you get second?
You can second.
I can second?
Sure.
Come on, the scoreboard.
Okay.
All in favor?
Two to, two to zero, four abstentions.
Okay. July 12th, moving into the summer. Um, appointment of new member to replace Carrie Gately, who's the new member to replace Carrie? Liz Barsanti, fantastic. She's got to approve four to nothing, look at you.
Oh, yes, these were the.
Public hearing, we've had the Board of Education lights, other people that spoke. Okay.
Going to last meeting.
Questions, comments, typos, scrivners, errors on this one? Anything ready, buddy?
Just wanna make sure, um, on my copy at least, the bottom justified.
It's really tight.
Goes right to the bottom of it, I just wanna make sure nothing, I, I kept reading it, it didn't seem like any sentence was missed, but as long as you're.
Yeah, we checked that, it just makes it.
There was nothing that looked like weird, like, uh, you know, a sentence was off there, but as long as that's the case, otherwise, it was fine by me, I didn't see any spelling errors or text or whatever.
We also had our first meeting for Tokenie Club.
Yeah.
We had our first meeting for Tokenie Club, it was good. Good general meeting items, okay. Questions, comments, typos, scrivners, errors on this one? Looking for a motion to approve as submitted, and we have Amy makes the motion, looking for a second. Adam makes a second, all in favor? Jeff, well, you can follow this one, great, so that's one, two, three.
Five to zero, Mike Nedher abstains.
Yep. George, all in favor, so, okay, next. July 19th, so the summer. Protected, the, what did the statement, oh, that was, the first item was polled, right?
Yes.
Yeah, first, uh, was withdrawn. Uh, okay, that's the next one. 65 page, you're pointing, this one, you had a little bit of a bottom margin issue too.
Yep, bottom of page nine, for example.
It's our first discussion of accessory dwelling units, um, on page three. Then we have, um, adopted resolutions on page five, can't touch that, and on page nine, can't touch that. Goes all the way to the end. Deliberations on the site plan, Permaton 16, I was out, recused himself. Okay, questions, comments, typos, scrivners, errors on this one? No, we have Ovani, Riley, Paul, uh, and Barsanti, Adam, Adam was in, Adam was in Maine.
Oh, he was in Maine.
Good for you, man.
I did watch it on TV.
Did you?
Thrilling.
Looking for a motion to, you gotta stay on vacation.
I didn't watch it in Maine on TV, let me, let me preface that.
Out of your iPhone. Motion, looking for a motion to approve as submitted, Amy makes a motion, looking for a second, Jeff makes a second, all in favor?
Five to zero.
Got it. Five, zero, Adam, Mike. Mike's out. Next one, uh, July 26th. In here in Town Hall, Route 206 again, Partry Point, 65 Partry Point Road again, Brush Island, we got Contemptland Island is the first one, they're still bouncing around with us. 75, 25 Tokenie Trail, our second meeting on the Affordable Housing Plan, or another meeting on Affordable Housing, not that one, build, the ADUs, 35 Old Parish. And then we have another couple of resolutions, that was all we just amended tonight, which is the, um.
Federal realty.
Federal realties with their orders, good stuff. Can't change that, that's the majority of it, right? All right, yep, federal realty's still here, fire marshals, another resolution from, what's it, Permaton 16. Can't change that. Andrew Shaw, we passed that there, resolution for them. Looks about it, another. Uh, deliberations on stuff, other business, yeah, this was the end of the summer, this is Jim Rand's last meeting. Questions, comments, typos, scrivners, errors on this one? You were, uh, Adam was not here, so it's Riley, Paul, Barsanti, Ovani. Looking for a motion to approve, I've submitted. Jeff, George makes the motion, Jeff makes the second, all in favor?
Yep.
Five, zero, one abstention.
Yep, okay, a new one, September 6th, apartment to replace Mr. Rand, shockingly, it's Mr. Neder, they're related. Are you Mike or Michael officially?
Michael.
Tokenie Club, we got that. Contemptland Island, still playing, the ADUs, close to opt out, this is, a lot of this is on, um, um, Dave Keating stuff. We have a resolution for, um, the Tweety one, that's the first I've spoken about. Can't change that, we have another resolution on Tokenie Trail, can't change that. A resolution on 65 Partry Point, can't change that. And a resolution on 25 Harbor Road, can't change that. Okay, um, at the end, subdivision, we just extended, um, yeah, extended that one, proven minutes. Questions, comments, typos, scrivners, errors on this one?
You did, uh, slide right by, the discussion of the Darien Board of Education, which by golly doesn't mention anything about testing for noise. I thought maybe a, a sentence would be appropriate.
It's a good idea, what page you on?
We discussed the state noise and how it related.
You referred to sections.
Page eight, eight and seven, se, I'm sorry, six and seven. You know, I'll take the blame if you just wanna say Riley, uh, suggested, uh, an amendment to the, uh, special permit that would provide for testing noise levels on five separate occasions, if you can leave it at that.
You got, you got that, Fred?
Yeah.
Okay, no, that's important that it was.
As opposed to just referencing the sections, that somebody might not understand what within these sections.
But, uh, I think he added it.
Especially now that they'll be removed.
Yes, 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 yeah, yeah, yes, because they are referenced as protection, but, yeah.
Okay, we'll get that on that.
Condition, uh, B, G, and J.
So I can live in infamy.
However, it may be used, yeah, because if you take out G, it's gonna get re, it's gonna be numbered, and then you're gonna look, it's gonna be in there.
Yep, yep.
Okay, good, thank you.
Very good catch, thank you. Now, it's important. It's very important, it's very, okay, with that change, uh, looking for a marshal to approve the minutes, um, as edited. Adam makes a motion, looking for a second, George makes a second, all in favor?
Six, zero, thank you.
Six, no, fantastic. All right, um, chairman's report's the next item out here. I did have a big thing to go over, one, two, three, four. Anyway, um, what I'd like to do, um, with the chairman's word, is just kind of blow through things, we had a great summer, I think around here, there's a lot of stuff that's, that's in the works right now. And I just wanna kind of update you guys, um, and, and gals, I guess that makes it.
I'm from Philadelphia, guys is uni, is a.
It's universal.
These guys, whatever you say, is these guys.
Uh, what's going on? It's also for the, for the benefit of, of the public, I think, also, um, the first item that I had in my list, and I, I did make a list, but I'm missing another piece of paper, which I, I knew I had, it was gone, is, um, BMW Phase One is basically completed, that's the car wash, which is in the back. The second thing they're gonna do is, is demolish the, um, old service building and then get that going. You can't see the, you can't see the car wash on the street, it doesn't have any noise, they did actually put all brand-new equipment in there, and it does have a door that goes up and down, and I was there one day, observed it, and you can't hear that from standing next to it if you're, um, if you're at Whole Foods. Uh, the Ochridge, um, academic wing, which is Phase One, opened and had a ribbon cutting on Saturday, September 10th. Um, I think the building came out beautiful, it's a, they did a really nice job. It's really not gonna be done, 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 for a year. Right now, they have, they're demoing the old gym in the back of the facility, uh, in the back of the old building, and that's where, once they do that, they're gonna create the, uh, the, um, where the gym's gonna be in the library and the new cafeteria. Right now, the new cafeteria's in the ELP wing, um, and it's working great for them, that was really nice.
So the feedback so far was a, a week or two of school under, under the bridge.
Yeah.
It's so far so good.
It's, the, the thing I would, I would also like to add is that, that, I, I personally think that we work really hard planning and zoning these things, and, and to my knowledge, we never received one complaint from anybody on the construction of that or the timing or that stuff. They are gonna fix the traffic light again, they still have to do that. And if you recall, um, Jim Rand's house is kind of sort of back there in that corner, and so there's a whole, they're gonna get closer to the neighbors there, but there was not one complaint in a year and a half or 18 months of that construction.
Well, there were, I think what they've done is a nice job in, uh, telling the neighbors, you got an issue, come to us, we'll see what we can do, and Tip Coons has worked closely with, and had many face-to-face meetings with folks who have concerns and tried to work them out.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the protocol, or that's the, I, I think that's the process it's supposed to go to, you're supposed to go, I mean, in most cases, to the principal first, and the principal goes to the administration, administration goes to the Board of Ed, the Board of Ed eventually comes to staff, and then eventually comes to us, if it never gets to us, that's, means the process is working.
At this point, both bus and car queuing, at least not worse than it used to be?
No, it's, it, I've not, I, I went there and looked at it and watched it, they've not had any problems at all, I got a couple of friends of mine that have kids that go there, and there's no issues at all.
I mean, with construction still ongoing, I would expect there's still gonna be queuing going on.
Yeah.
Back to Mansfield, but if it's not worse, that's the accomplishment itself.
I think, well, you're also gonna remember that, that because ELP's not there, you still didn't add those other six classrooms of kids.
Yeah.
So once ELP does come in.
120 kids or something.
Yeah, there's gonna be another six classrooms of kids. So we'll head back, we'll head back from there, but I think they did a fantastic job. Um, the Darien Playhouse is the next one on my list, that's done, 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 La Taqueria opened, um, Laurent Lighting should have either opened this week or opened soon, that's one that's on the corner, it's a. That's when it's on the corner, it's a lighting store. Um, and then Kennedy's Barber Shop just changed their name to Rudy's, and that one's open, um, and off to the races. The next one that I have on my list is eighteen ninety-seven Boston Post Road. That's the building, it's at, at the base or the top of Rings End Road. Um, five apartments, twenty percent affordable. All the apartments are full. Everybody's in there. I was there yesterday, there's six cars in the, in the lot on a Sunday evening. Um, the retail store is, um, Darien Kitchen and Bath. I think they opened already. Um, it was closed on a Sunday. Um, Boots is the, what we just talked about tonight was Altude, that's gonna open probably next year. Uh, but they're, I think they, they are, I think they pulled their permit for their construction or not, I'm not really sure.
I think they've started with the building permit.
Yeah, the inside. Um, after that, we have Birdco. Birdco is the old HSBC of the block. We had a bunch of hearings on that one, that's why it kind of makes my list. Um, they're gonna pull their hot chicken yuck, they're going to pull their building, building permit in October, and they'll be open next year. Um, so that's, that is gonna be moving forward. Uh, what else we have? Subway closed, Bell Cleaners closed. That building on the, on Heights Road is slated for demolition. Um, the building was on the market for sale. Um, it's not on the market for sale anymore because the, um, they're gonna demolish the building and do some kind of work there. I think it's, um, there needs to be a little bit of remediation done there. Um, if the fire department wants to go in there and burn a building, you might want to reach out to them. I know you guys do do that, in all seriousness. Um, but I don't know when they're knocking it down. Um, what else? The other one that's, I have here is in terms of residential, the four lot subdivision over an old farm road, and then we've bounced around with that for a long time.
Yep, those are moving along, they're...
I think two of the houses are, two of the lots are under development, I think two of them are sold. Did you know about that?
Homewood, I think it's done, the two on Homewood, twenty-eight old farm.
Two on Homewood are custom homes, those are done, if you're living in them. One is closed.
That was one of the biggest, yeah, that was one of the biggest subdivisions that we did again in the last couple of years, in terms of subdivisions. I think the two houses at the old, um, what's, um, what was, what was the school called? Partry Point School.
Partry Point School, they're gonna get started. I was just on the phone with them yesterday, get started with start.
They got a lot of...
For the one.
They got a lot of...
They're gonna start with one, yeah.
Yeah. And that one's already sold, or?
I don't know.
Okay. That's another subdivision, the four lot subdivision, they're building and going, going gangbusters up there. Um, what else? The road construction at, at the corner of Narroton Avenue and West Avenue started. Um, there's a big sign up there that's got Monica McNally's name on the bottom of it. Um, a lot of state funding was done for there. They started that. Um, again, we planned and zoned for that way back before, um, the Heights was done, which is the old Aloneo, because there's, there's a light that had to get moved back, because they were eventually gonna do that. So, somebody got us the money, um, everything's in, and they're moving forward and going on that one.
I had to chuckle though, when I drove by the sign, I was like, this sign violates every parameter of our signage code. Everyone, how big it is, everything.
State DOT requires the sign.
I was like, okay!
They work with you on where you're gonna put the sign, because it's their million dollars, so they want to make sure they get the credit.
Yeah, and it's, it's in a spot where nobody can see it.
We spent a lot of time arguing over where to put that sign.
You did a great spot for it. Because nobody can see the sign, it can block anything. Um, what else?
Before we jump off that, that area, the next time, I, I think I voiced this to you, that pocket park that's gonna go into the Commons has such a sightline onto the mechanicals on top of Equinox. I don't know if anybody's paid any attention to it, I was like, gassing up the other day, and I'm looking over there as I was gassing my car, and I was like, wow, that is, can we ask them if they have plans for, to cover those mechanicals? Because that, that, that park that comes in off of, off of there, you're gonna see, you just see the roof line of that Equinox.
We'll take a look.
All those mechanicals are really...
Okay, I'll go out there.
They're gonna be like, oof.
So stand, stand in Seymour's old office?
Yes.
And look to the top of, it's all the, the mechanical equipment is all rusted.
Yeah.
That's on top of Equinox.
It's kind of an eyesore, anyway.
I don't know if it's supposed to have a mainsort covered or not, but it, it should. Um, a couple of other quick items, um, I always look to what happens in Darien, what happens outside of Darien. Um, Target is coming to Norwalk. They're gonna go to the old, um, or the existing Walmart that's there now. I think that's gonna, I think it's gonna be a little bit of a difference. I do think Target is more, um, may create more traffic for Darien residents.
Where, like Home Depot?
Yes.
That Walmart's going away?
That Walmart's going away, Target's gonna be gonna replace them. With that same breath, Wegmans is coming in to the old MBI building, which is back kind of sort of behind, um, Home Depot, or not Home Depot, Costco. It's down the hole, that's gonna create...
Hold on, where's Wegmans coming?
Behind Costco.
Uh-huh.
You can, if you, if you're on ninety-five...
Oh, MBI, where the Christmas lights...
Yeah, yeah. That's going in there, that's gonna create a lot more traffic. Um, when we do our reports of things that are like, you know, a Birdco, or like a Seven-Eleven, or anything that's near the borders, we tell our neighbors on what's going on, and they kind of get to chime in a little bit. This is, I guess, so far down the road that doesn't. But the biggest complaint that we've gotten recently and mostly over the summer is that the traffic on the Post Road has really gotten bad. Um, and it really starts at, um, it really starts at the, the railroad trucks and goes all the way down to the end. I've not heard any traffic problems that go from the railroad track underpass to the Stanford end. It's really with the railroad tracks to the, um, to the Norwalk side. And, and, you know, Parklands in your neighborhood is right kind of in the middle on there. It's kind of centers around, um, where Trader Joe's is. So that's something I know people are looking at, um, because that's where the road goes from like, one lane to two lanes to one lane, and it's kind of calculating. Um, but hopefully that Wegmans and, and Target doesn't really create too much issues. Um, I can also tell you that, that I had the opportunity to go out with a guy that's one of the biggest developers in Norwalk over the summer. They're building apartments in Norwalk and in Stanford, you know, all the time, every day. There's new construction that's starting all the time. There's, um, most of them are affordable. There's an affordable component in it, in Stanford and in, in Norwalk. Um, in those schools, and, and we talked about this a little bit, because this came up at OPC, a lot of those other school districts have excess capacity, um, and they have bigger police departments, bigger fire departments, bigger, um, you know, emergency services. I don't think our schools really have a whole lot of excess capacity since they're taking away the, the portables now. Um, and our fire department is our fire department, our EMT is our EMTs, and our police department is a police department. So that's something that, that when we talk about affordable housing and all that's, and all that stuff and multifamily housing, you know, we're right in between two huge cities that do, that do that kind of stuff, so we have to keep our eyes on that kind of stuff. Um, the Darien Commons, um, those apartments, which is the federal project, is, is the first building, is, I think, fifty percent leased. It is, is the first building, there's fifty market rate units in there, there's eight affordables in there. They had their, um, lottery, uh, last Thursday for the affordables, for the eight units. Um, but the way the lottery goes, I think it was only the first building, which is the eight units, they might have done sixteen, I didn't, I don't, I don't recall what the answer was. But in terms of the lottery, there's sixteen P, sixteen affordable apartments. They draw a lottery of like, for argument's sake, twenty-five names, because the first people may not want to go in it, or when they get down to sixteen, maybe they got an apartment someplace else, um, so they can't move in. The, the affordable units in Building One, which is the building that's on West Avenue, is supposed to be ready for occupancy on, on November first. So I think that's kind of something cool.
Did you get a, uh, report on, uh, school-aged children?
Yes. Um, there is one new school-aged children in that building.
Oh, yeah.
Um, where is it? There is, yes, um, there are three total school-aged children in Building One. Two of, two of them are already enrolled in the school district, and they're moving in Darien, within Darien. So it's only plus one additional kid that's going into that building. Um, the retail tenants, they have eleven retail tenants signed in the complex. They're negotiating with four more retail tenants. Um, the, the one that's, that jumped off the page to me is Solid Core, um, is a new one I saw, that is a yoga, um, fitness club that's gonna be in there. Um, there's also a bunch of restaurants, which everyone's heard a lot of them, which is Van Zulens, Gregory's, um, Sweet Green's gonna be in, Sweet Green...
Naya.
Naya, what's that?
It's like a Middle Eastern, like Chipotle, it's in, it's in Midtown.
Yeah, they are, N-Y-A, yep.
Their, their, uh, their first eatery was about three blocks from my office. There's four hundred people a day that go there. It's crazy. It's the, it's so good, and it's somewhat cheap.
Good.
And so everybody who works in New York around here is like, that's the only, the only name people recognize.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I, I saw it on, I haven't heard of it.
It'll do really well. Just imagine a, a Chipotle, but with Middle Eastern food, chicken shawarma and hummus and baba ganoush and stuff, instead of like, rice and beans. Same, same conveyor belt, same line, same trays, it's the exact same thing.
Then they also have Sweet Green, which is the same as Chapp.
Yeah, salad version of it.
Yeah, salad version of Chapp. So those guys, they're doing pretty well over there in terms of leasing. Um, what else? The stairs that go up, I call it the up-and-over stairs, which goes from West Avenue to the front of Walgreens. That's supposed to be open either this week or next week. That's a big, it's got to do with walkability in town. Um, we want the kids, I mean, I've drive, I drive through there at like, seven-thirty in the morning, and the kids are trying to make sure they stay safe, and at night, when the kids are coming out of Middlesex School, you know, some of them might go down that road. The sidewalk is pretty much done, done, done. The piece that we're just talking about, which is the Narroton Avenue...
Edgerton, they're working on Edgerton this week.
And then the corner pieces, Edgerton, the reason why that was delayed a little bit on that corner, if you, if you ever go by it, is that's where the gas meters are in that building. So they create, they put the gas meters there, then they put a vault around it, and then they fill it in, and then they finish the sidewalk in that one corner. Um, the landscaping went in, I think, on Friday.
Yeah, I was there Wednesday, so they were...
Yeah.
So I'll be out again tomorrow.
Yeah, I mean, I, and, and I can tell you one thing too, I've spoken to some of these developers, and they give more accolades and compliments to Town Hall and the Building Department and, and these guys about being responsive and, and, you know, getting all their check-offs on all their stuff all the time. Um, so thank you guys again for that, for keeping up top of it. Um, what else? Corbin Building, Corbin Building One, which is at the end, it's effectually known as Tibbetts Building, that's got four apartments in it, that's basically done. Um, they're supposed to have the tenants move in, uh, next month. Building Three, which is the Bank of Ameri- America Building, was topped off. Um, that building, at the height it's at now, is pretty much the height of what the building's gonna be. And if you look at it from the Grebes Pharmacy side of the street, that building, again, and, and the one next door, which is ten-twenty, are at the same plane, the same height. Um, so it's not really gonna much, gonna get higher. The third floor on that building already has the gables up, the windows with the gables, and they're just gonna attach all that stuff. Um, the middle building is the Compass Building, is what I call it, that's on the second floor, that's the larger building. Um, that one's already up to the second floor. The big thing that the developer of that one wanted to, um, make sure that we know is the first floor of Corbin Drive, and I know it, I'm pretty sure it's on both sides of the street, it's a hundred percent leased. So, or the only, so if you go from Bank of America on the corner where it, it, it used to be a hair salon all the way down to the end, past the post office, all that retail space on that street is all leased. I mean, that's amazing that somebody can do that this far advanced.
Is he gonna come back to us with that dog park?
I think the dog park's already done.
I think that's a few years away.
Yeah.
I think he's gotta finish Phase One.
Yeah, well, he tried to sneak it into that meeting a couple of months ago.
That was the last minute, wasn't it?
These three buildings won't be done till this January, February, March.
Yeah.
Then he'll move some tenants, then it's a hole in the ground to build nine other buildings, which will take multiple years.
Yep, doesn't take a long time. Um, what else is on here? Sixteen, seventeen, um, the Darren Sports Shop, they went in front of ARB. Um, the front of their building is really at the back of their building, and the back is the front. They're gonna do some facade renovations and a little bit of landscaping renovations on theirs. We don't, we, we're never gonna see that because you're not changing much, not changing anything, but you're gonna see work on, um, the Darren Sports Shop. I think they're gonna, if you look at it, there's the door, then there's a window, then there's another window, I think the middle window is coming out. Um, I've not seen the plans, but...
On the corner, or at the parking lot side?
At the parking lot side, at the parking lot side. Um, I, they, I wanted them to, um, extend the sidewalk down and take out some of that landscaping in the front. I think that's yet to be foreseen, um, but I, I think they're gonna do a nice job. And again, those guys have to keep up with what's going on across the street, um, so they'll have to be good in also what's north next to them. The next thing that's important for us is, um, it's effectually known as HHR, which is Homes, Henley, and Royal. That will be coming to us soon. Um, Jeremy and, and the rest of, um, Jeremy's staff and team have been coaching, I'm gonna say, those guys along, the architects, to make sure, um, that everything's mostly in, in being done. They're, I think, doing about seventy-five million dollars in total cr- across three schools. Um, we haven't seen anything yet, and they got schematics, and they got all kinds of plans, but because these guys coach them along, um, they know what they're doing. I think there's, the, the goal is to get the portables out, and it's also a lot of it is, is traffic and queuing and, and circulation around the buildings. Um, there's gotta be some new construction, how it works out.
There is some new construction on all three buildings, so you'll see those in November. We're probably not gonna be able to do all of them in one night, so you may see one on one night, and then a week later, another one or two.
So that, that, that to me was, it was kind of important. Um, the other thing in terms of residential, there's about nine houses on, or eight or nine houses on a construction on Long Neck Point. Um, I've not heard one iota from anything on any of those. I think they're all going along great. Um, I think that just bodes well for our town, that people want to build houses, you know, especially on that route, and, you know, I think all the houses look really nice. Um, the Fletcher Team, which owns another office building, is, um, they're, they're building one of the houses. Um, I know you're up and down that street a lot, and I think they're doing, I think they're doing really well. Um, the other two other quick items that are, that to me are kind of important is, um, the old, it was, it was some kind of church, which is on the corner of, facing the corner of Token Creek Road and Old Kings Highway. That was on the market for sale, it was a big sign that was out there. We did get a lot of, field a lot of phone calls from people that wanted to buy it, knock it down, and do something else there. It landed up selling to another, um, religious institution. It's gonna stay a church. Um, they may do some minor renovations to it, but I think it's a church that, um, you know, they really want to keep the inside. Inside, there is, it's a really cool, I walked it with the first selectman, it's a really cool auditorium that's really designed to have mass on television. Um, and there was some proposals to knock it down and put like, you know, twenty-five apartments there, and get it rezoned and all that stuff. And those phone calls come into Town Hall, and these guys gotta field them, say, hey, you know, would you be receptive of that? I think the answer was like, I don't think so. Um, there's also a parking issue there, too. Next to that is another building that is, um, nine Old Kings Highway, which is, that was a parking, there was a parking agreement between that building, nine Old Kings, I want another one. Nine Old Kings Highway Building, Office Building just sold, um, last Thursday. The Carrows that owned some other buildings bought it, and they're gonna do a multi-million dollar renovation to it. I think it's mostly really facade work, um, to bring it up to speed to, to current, um...
Is that the one that's black, like mirrored?
Yep, it's on the corner.
Yeah.
It's on the corner, next to that big boulder that's in the middle.
Yeah, Exxon Chemical.
Is that what was in there way back when?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, so I mean, I, I like to keep you guys up to, to, to speed on what, what I know, what I've seen, what I've heard. Um, and, you know, I spend some time going around and speaking to people, um, and I just want you guys to know everything that's going on, and, um, the public to know what's happening, too. If you guys have any questions for me on any of these items, um, I can try to answer them, if I haven't already answered it already.
Is there anything going on on the west side of the Narroton Heights development, where the Goddard School's gonna go?
Oh, Palmer's?
Yeah, that whole thing.
I don't really have a big update on that. It, it, we do get complaints, and we can go into it a little bit. They, um, I think it hit the board of selectmen earlier, there's the blight law that's for residential, and they want to switch it to, to, you know, have all copies for, for commercial. Jeremy and some other people, they get it. We did send a letter to the Palmer Organization back in May. They told them that, you know, you're, congratulations on your building permit and whatnot, um, but as part of you had to wrap it in plastic and make it pretty. I've not heard anything that's, that's announcable, um, of what's going on there. They could pull their building permit tomorrow if they wanted to.
Gotcha.
Um, I don't know if they've got construction financing.
Yeah, that's still the money thing, huh?
Yeah, I, I think it's part of it, it's, they, they, you know, I, I don't know.
Might have missed their window.
Yeah. Yeah, they did. Um, any other questions?
Um, you, you mentioned blight, so I should comment, I do chair the blight review board, and so we did consider, uh, really instigated by Mike Burke, a selectman, uh, the prospect of expanding our jurisdiction to include commercial properties. And, uh, uh, we had one dissent in our group, but the rest of us felt that it would be appropriate to have that, uh, club in our golf bag, as Mr. Burke said, and... to have that club in our golf bag, as Mr. Burke said, and so have that available for us to work with in the future. That needs to go to the selectmen, and then we'd have to go to the RTM as an amendment to the ordinance.
Is Frank Kemp, is he on your board?
No.
No, Frank's on the RTM.
Just for your information, while we're on the blight topic, we have proposed to the board of selectmen that they undertake a foreclosure of the most prominent longstanding blight problem where we had been assessing fines for over two years. We think they're over a hundred thousand dollars. We'll see what the selectmen want to do about that, but we did move that. I did want to inquire, speaking of what the public can know about Great Island and that hundred million dollar sort of thing, anything going on?
I've not been up to speed. I've not heard much about it, except that the due diligence period got extended.
That's all I know. What was in the paper?
I don't, it's, I, I get calls every, now and again on it, but nothing that, you know, that's.
Was it extended until?
March.
It was extended for seven months from the date, so it would have been September or August. I think it was supposed to end in August.
In August, right, end of August.
I think it's into next year. I don't know the exact date.
August, September, October, November, December, January, February, March.
Yeah, March.
Something like that.
What about the adjacent parcel? Kind of any word on that?
Oh, that, it's called, what do they call it?
The Ziegler's own, I think, fourteen building lots.
Ziegler Farm.
It's approved for fourteen building lots?
That, that is a subdivided fourteen-lot subdivision. Some of the lots there have deed restrictions on them because it's homeowners association.
Gotcha.
But that, that kind of starts at, I think the last house is ninety-nine, and so it goes from, you know, ninety-nine down to thirty-eight for on the odd side of the street. But those are on the market for sale. It's being brokered by a Greenwich broker.
Yep, Greenwich broker, a seventies Greenwich broker.
They, they, if I was them, I would sell one lot at a time, but I think they have.
They're not selling one lot at a time, as now. It's being marketed as a whole parcel.
A full parcel, yeah.
Yeah. So, those, those were, those, that subdivision was done, it's got to be in the eighties or nineties.
It's going to be an expensive bit of land.
Yeah, a long time ago.
It's asking eighty-five million.
Yeah. I thought they were somewhere down in the seventies.
I think that's it. Yeah. That's it, that's it on my end. The next item on the agenda is a director's report.
Yeah, the only thing, I think I gave everyone a copy of the Affordable Housing Plan, except for Mike. So, make sure you got one. We did send it up to OPM the day afterwards, or two days after. And so, we're, they've acknowledged receipt, filed it with the town clerk. We're going to get copies to the folks at that end of the hall, and we'll take it from there. Project's completed.
It was on the front page of the papers last week.
Yep.
I liked the article. The headline hit it really well.
Oh, no, delayed. I keep saying it's delayed.
And you asked for a director's report, sir?
Nope, you covered many of the items I was going to cover, so.
Oh, the, we touched on it, or somebody said it, the marijuana, the marijuana laws. Do we need to opt out of any of those, or create some regulation that says like what all the other residential towns, you know, are doing to say, not here?
Yeah, well, what we, I've told people is, Darien has never allowed the sale of marijuana.
Dispensary, yeah.
Dispensaries or production facilities. So, people call, and I say, well, the regs have not changed. We have not traditionally allowed it. For a while, Darien had a brief moratorium saying, look, we got to think about this. But at this point, that is the reading that staff is taking is.
So, it's not like the ADU thing where we have to pass something else that has to go in front of everybody just to say we don't want it explicitly?
We do get inquiries once a month from someone. Oftentimes, it's people who are trying to figure out where to go. I think, my opinion is, the whole thing will shake out, and it'll be a non-issue.
Okay.
Is that just for commercial sales and distribution? I mean, like, like if I wanted to grow marijuana in my backyard, is that permissible?
I think you're allowed to.
I mean, is that under, is that just an agricultural?
Yeah, but I think it's like limited to five plants.
Right, right, yeah. No, I know there's limitations on it, but like, I don't think planning and zoning gets involved in that, right?
Yes, we do not.
That's right.
What we get the questions on are the dispensaries.
Maine, I just drove through Maine to pick my son up from camp, and it goes dispensary, gun store, fireworks. And it just repeats over and over again. This is the most amazing experience. I was like, that's my wife. Why don't we just stop and grab some stuff? Bring all, it's all recreational. It is all, you know, fully approved. It's crazy. Brave new world.
Okay, that's it. Our next meeting is September twenty-seventh and October eleventh. Anything you want to tell us about those?
September twenty-seventh is a pretty full public hearing night, five or six hearings. At this point, they all appear to be not contentious, but we'll see. October eleventh, you're likely to have an executive session to discuss pending litigation. We'll talk more about accessory apartments and a likely decision on the Token Creek Club.
Okay. Question, and Jeremy asked me this. Relative to the three schools, which is the HHR, where do we leave it off? We want to have one school a night? You want to do all three in the same nights?
Yeah, I don't think all three is going to work.
It's not going to work, right?
Yeah, we were hoping to, but I don't think from a timing standpoint in terms of, you know, some are a little more complex than others, so.
And also, the other thing was, yeah, it was a crowd, for argument's sake. So, everyone from Henley School is going to be here, and Henley goes first, and then all the homeschool parents are sitting there waiting, you know, when's our turn?
Right, why do we go first?
Are these meetings to happen before twenty twenty-three?
Oh, these, these will be in November. They, they emailed me tonight and said, we're going to submit in October to try to get on November agendas. They want to have all their approvals in order by the end of January.
They have all kinds of filing deadlines with the state to get the state money. But I think what we typically do is, is if it's kind of like the Henley night, it should be first on the agenda. So, all the Henley parents will come, and then once they finish it, then they all just get out. And then the same with Token, I'm sorry, Royal will be the first, they'll be the first ahead. So, they come in, everyone says their piece.
We're going to bring in outside reviewers for each to review, peer review the stormwater, the drainage systems, as well as traffic and parking.
And they're using who today?
Ty and Bond is handling both on behalf of the Board of Ed. We're going to bring in Mike Galante of Hardesty in Hanover to look at the traffic and parking, and Craig Flaherty of Redness and Mead to review the stormwater.
Okay. Yeah, it's, mostly, I mean, the good thing is because we've been doing this so long, most of the guys know our regs and know, some of them know better than we do. Not better than these guys, but they all know, they know how it works. And like I said earlier, who did, did Ty and Bond do?
Oxbridge?
Oxbridge, and Craig reviewed it.
Yeah, Ox, Ty and Bond did, Craig Yanis of Ty and Bond did the traffic, talked about just what you said, the traffic light. Craig Flaherty reviewed the stormwater.
Because that was a big stormwater thing.
Yeah, that's a big stormwater.
And then with, I'm assuming October fourth is a holiday?
October fourth, yeah. No meaning of holiday. That's why we, we meet next week, get a week off, and then we'll meet three or four weeks in a row.
Okay.
October fourth is a holiday.
Rush on or you're?
Rush on.
Oh, I'm sorry. How did I know about that?
Just, you know, I mean, I think I've said I won't be here next week, and October looks iffy, just so you know now.
Okay. All right, with that said, it is almost quarter of. And ten a motion to adjourn? Jeff makes a motion. Looking for a second. Adam makes a second. All is a proven.
Thank you all.
Thank you, everybody.